New business. Okay, public hearing, recommendation of proposed, proposed City of Salida South Arc annexation.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm going to present this item for you. This property was purchased by the city in 2022. It's comprised, the actual annexation is comprised of two parcels, a 1.97 acre and a 0.2 acre. They're located adjacent to the South Arc neighborhood sub area of the Vandiver planned ranch plan development. And the larger parcel, the 1.97 acre parcel, was deed restricted for active park and recreational purposes, such as multi-use fields and other incidental or access-related purchases, purposes. The smaller parcel has no restrictions, having previously served as an access easement. The little arm, yes, the little skinny, skinny piece. In terms of the process, the next slide, we're at our public hearing. This is under state statute, it doesn't follow the same level of hearings and noticing requirements as a normal annexation. So in this case, we are actually following city ordinance because it's, an annexation is a major impact review category. So it requires a planning commission, public hearing, and then we're doing a first and second reading for city council, just to follow the ordinance process. It is, but in a normal annexation, you have four notifications in the paper. You have to notify the districts, you have to do a resolution of substantial compliance and a resolution of findings of facts.
Because the city owns this parcel, that's not.
We don't have to do all that. Yep, and that, there is a memo to that effect from the city attorney in your packet. So the process requirements, we did still have to meet the continuity. And it's in with the, within the municipal services area and complies with our intergovernmental agreement with Chaffee County. And one of the other considerations is that it's not solely a street or public right-of-way. And the city council, public hearing date will be October 21st. And as I mentioned, there are no other resolutions required. The next slide just shows you the IGA area, the orange is the MSA for Salida. And it's in that little circle. So there were no comments from reviewing agencies at all. So it was fairly simple and straightforward. So the recommended motion is to recommend that city council approve the annexation of approximately 2.17 acres known as the City of Salida's South Arc Annexation. Any questions? It will remain deed restricted, yes, that was in the sales agreement. The bigger parcel. No, for recreational purposes, it didn't specify what kind specifically. Could be, could be active or it could be trails.
Right at the corner, it's very wet, so I don't know.
Yeah, or it'll just remain open space.
It's, it's, it's pretty wet out there and the opportunities currently are fairly limited. There may be some opportunities in the long term for mitigation strategies or something that might increase those opportunities. But for right now, it's, it's really just going to be a utility corridor for bringing in the mainline water line down to the rest of the residential neighborhood. And then plans will play out in, in future phases as far as the rest of the use.
Any other questions? All right. I assume there's no one, there's no one here to comment, no one online?
No one online.
Okay, we'll close that. Commissioner's discussion, maybe a motion.
Well, I move to recommend city council approve the annexation of approximately 2.17 acres of property known as the City of Salida South Arc Annexation, followed by a second and a roll call vote.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ready to vote?
Pauline.
Yes.
Bomer.
Yes.
Crevel.
Yes.
Dermixon.
Yes.
Leighton.
Yes.
All right, that brings us to the recommendation on proposed R2 zoning for the City of Salida of 2.17 acre South Arc Annexation.
Okay, so we can go to the area map. Just in terms of the context here, you can see the extent of the Vandiver Plan Development. The surroundings are mostly residential in the county. There's mixed-use corridor that's still in the county up off Highway 50. And then commercial, of course, in the city along Highway 50. And if you go to this next slide, that shows the city zoning where you can see the commercial and other mixed-use developments in the area. So I think it's pretty self-explanatory as far as the zoning goes, but just to clarify, the R2 does allow for recreational uses. We do not have currently in our code, a parks and open space zone. So we had to basically pick a residential zone that would be compatible with the future land use map and whatnot, and also accommodate future recreational uses. So on the next slide, you can see the future land use map and is the Vandiver Plan there? One of those slides? Is that it? Oh, okay. Yeah, so there you can see the context of the Vandiver PD adjacent to what would, what has been planned as the future regional park plan for this area. And again, the future land use map does indicate parks, recreation and open space. A little bit of green on the future land use map. In terms of the review standards, the proposed R2 low-density residential is consistent with the comprehensive plan, it's compatible with the adjacent properties and allows for the recreational uses as called for in the sales agreement. And future pedestrian connectivity will be accommodated. And the zoning, of course, is occurring because it's required by the land use code to, following an annexation. So with that, the recommended motion is that Planning Commission recommends city council approve the proposed zoning of the South Arc Annexation property to R2 low-density residential as it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and will accommodate recreational uses as called for in the Vandiver Plan Development. Any questions?
Yeah, well, is the plan to rezone this to, I guess it's recreation.
Parks and open.
Once the new code is implemented.
We would not need to rezone it in, under the new code, or we wouldn't even technically have to incorporate it into the Vandiver PD unless some other uses would be proposed that would, we'd want to wrap it in for some reason. So it's, it'll function just the way it is with the R2 zoning.
So the, the land that's open space there now, that's in the floodplain, what is it zoned? In Vand, in the Vandiver Plan?
Well, it's part of a PD, so.
Just says it's open space.
Vandiver PD is an actual PD zoning.
Yes.
And then there's like the areas were defined as what the uses were.
Okay, so it, so it, it doesn't have a zoning per se, it just has a name.
Right.
Why don't we put it in the PD then?
Right.
We could, if, if we do a modification of the PD in the future, we might wrap it in there. It's just, it's just a, it's, it's a process that you just have to go through.
We can't zone it PD right now.
No, you have to have the underlying zoning.
It's not a, yeah.
We, well, we, yeah, because it's.
To do this first, and then you can.
And then you could do that later if need be.
The way we do it now is we always have an underlying zoning and then zone it. Otherwise, it would be a PD modification and that would be another step.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Any public?
No.
Anybody online?
Nope.
Okay, close that and then go to discussion.
I move to recommend city council approve the proposed zoning of the city, of the City of Salida South Arc 2.17 acre property as proposed to be annexed to R2 low-density residential zone district as it meets the applicable review standards. And a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second recommending proposed R2 zoning for the City of Salida, 2.17 acre South Arc Annexation. Any further discussion? Pauline.
Yes.
Bomer.
Yes.
Crevel.
Yes.
Dermixon.
Yes.
Leighton.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Any updates, unfinished business, commissioner comments?
I've got a few updates. So land use code and zoning map will be going to city council for first reading this coming Monday, sorry, Tuesday, the 16th. We are actually, generally an ordinance will go for first reading as part of the consent agenda. We're going to actually ask council to pull it from the consent agenda. And we, Matt and myself are going to do the presentation, more or less the presentation that was given to you all for council during that meeting, just to try to elicit any feedback or desired changes to provide us time prior to the public hearing to make those. And then, of course, it'll be going to a public hearing on October 7th. So, you know, if everything goes smoothly, then we anticipate an approval of October 7th. We have set December 22nd as the effective date for it. And that keeps us with some of the changes that we needed to do for some grant purposes prior to the end of the year. Will provide us the additional time that we need to continue working on administrative manuals, application forms and whatnot. So it'll be a little bit of a race to the wire to get all that stuff done and, and ready for folks coming in the, in the door as of December 22nd, but that's the plan right now.
So December 22nd is when you're anticipating it to be effective?
Correct. Yep. We do have a work, joint work session planned for you all. So we do have the meeting coming up on the 22nd where Kristin will be bringing forth the major subdivision for the South Arc Neighborhood, so you'll see that. And then there will be a joint work session for a, a commercial proposal in, on October, what date is that, 7th? So that is going to be immediately preceding the regular meeting of the 7th. And the same one where we anticipate the, the land use code, public hearing.
So October 7th at 5 o'clock?
At 5 o'clock.
Is the joint session?
Yeah, and that's because the day before is a holiday.
Right.
And so everything's being moved to the next day.
October, oh, is this the 7th?
The October 7th, yep, Tuesday, October 7th at 5:00 PM.
Okay, and the 22nd, we are having a work session, did I hear you right on that?
It's a regular meeting, this, this September 22nd, so a regular meeting. Yep. Just an update on the, the 5H development, as you are probably aware, there's a lot of discussion around that one. And the developer and staff have been working together on an annexation agreement. The developer is voluntarily proposing some additional conditions that would put the development in line with some of the neighborhood wishes around that particular development, basically with the intent of trying to avoid a potential referendum. And so that is, that's been posted into the, well, will be posted in the packet, actually, this evening or tomorrow morning. And we'll go in front of city council on Tuesday for their review. You know, generally speaking, it would require that the development be no greater than 72 units, follow much of the layout that was provided in a conceptual form by the developer. We outlined some of the IH requirements of that and, you know, some of the other aspects to the actual site plan that they provided. So it's an attempt to try and, you know, compromise and make everybody happy and hopefully avoid a pretty costly referendum process.
Didn't sound like that was possible at that, listening to that last meeting.
We'll see where it goes.
I've never heard a developer offer so much to try to make so many people happy. And they don't seem to be made happy. You know, I think their biggest thing is that R2 zoning, and they don't understand that that's not going to help them. You know, that's going to end up with less open space, you know, bigger property. It's just, it's not going to be what they think it's going to be. And I don't know how staff or council educates that group to understand that that's not what they think they're getting, if they get it.
Yeah. Yeah, we may have some of that conversation on Tuesday, we'll see. And then Kristin, you want to talk about the Lytech project on the meeting coming up?
Sure, so if you guys remember, the recent Granzella annexation was for, primarily for a senior Lytech project. And so we, we did an RFP for that and we've selected a development group. The professional services agreement went to council a couple of weeks ago. And so we're moving forward with that project. And we are going to be having a public outreach meeting on October 8th. If you, if any of you would like to attend that, we are hoping to secure a location for that soon and get, get a time for when that would start. But the meeting will primarily be led by the development team, including the architecture team, with staff presence as well. So looking forward to that.
Yeah, the hope for that is to bring, you know, a conceptual design and have folks provide their feedback on that and maybe one, maybe two different designs. We're on a pretty tight timeline as far as getting a Lytech application in, so we've asked them to do a fair amount of work ahead of time and, and staff's been working with the development team to kind of provide some of the opportunity and challenges to that particular area. So it should be, it should be a good one. I'm hoping to line up actually the fire station as the meeting place since it's right across the street from.
Do we have a, a potential time for that? I know you don't have a.
In all likelihood, it'll be, since it's midweek, it'll probably be after.
Same time after work, yeah.
Like 5 to 7 or something.
Something like that.
Somewhere in there, yeah.
Yeah.
So I believe it's a Wednesday evening.
Correct.
That would be amazing.
Yeah, yeah, pretty excited about it. Hopefully we can get, play off of the momentum of the Chaffa Land Banking grant that we got for that. And since we're under the gun from Chaffa to get this done, they might say, well, there you go. Way to keep it going. Find out. That's all we got.
Anything further on D Street?
I don't know if I told this body, unfortunately, Art Space made it to the final round for the Chaffa Middle Income Housing Tax Credit Grant. Did an interview around that. We were one of just five communities to, to interview. In the end, they, they awarded three of those communities and we were one of the two that did not get awarded. I do, we got feedback around it. It, it was a numbers game. If they, if they funded us, they probably would have only been able to fund one other community. And by comparison, this project is, is much smaller than the other ones that were, that were looking for funding overall, even though their, the amounts they were looking for were, were smaller than ours. And they opted to go with those other communities, two of them in Denver and, and one up in, I think it was Grand Lake area or right around, or Frazier, Frazier. So we are hopeful that we will be able to get that funding for the next round. Unfortunately, it does push everything back at least a year.
No, parking lot, a little bit longer.
Yep, yep. It was the, the main funding source that we were looking at for this particular project since it isn't big enough to go, go after a Lytech award. But this MyTech award is, it fits it to a T and we hope we can actually make it a little bit more cost-effective. They did note that the cost per unit was higher than they would have liked to have seen, but we're in the mountains.
It is what it is. Right, we're not.
Yeah, it's a challenge. Folks on the front range have a tough time understanding the realities we have here.
But maybe next time they'll realize it's a second chance, you know, that they'll remember.
Yeah, they'll already be familiar with it.
Yeah.
And do you guys, as somebody who lives on the detour route of Oak Street, do you guys, do you guys get any updates on how that's going?
I hear it's going well. I don't, I don't know. A lot of great work being done out there.
Lots of piles of dirt.
Yep. You know, the, the, the goal is certainly to get it done before freezing temperatures arrive. I haven't heard a, an end date just yet, but I think the intent was sometime in October, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, there was something, Public Works put something out not too long ago about it and I can't remember now if it was in the paper or online. But yeah, everyone's ready to have that.
Yeah, I bet, I bet. And then the north side of town gets to deal with it next year, so. Really trying to spread it around.
Spread it around, right?
How is Salida Crossing doing?
Funny. They have, they have, they've made some progress, they're making progress, let's put it that way. They, they did rehire a whole new GC for the project who has been very on it. They are working on things right now that, they, they probably should have checked with us on a couple of things and they need to go through the proper permitting process on a few of these things. But now that they have the CDOT approvals for access, they're able to make a little bit of progress. And I, I don't know if we've heard when they're starting the utility.
I don't know.
Yeah, but, yeah, they're stuck going the, the townhomes at the moment, but they got to bring in.
They're definitely making progress. For a while, it just sat there, it was really sad.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're moving on it. I think they recognize the need to get this done before weather.
Right.
Comes into.
Right.
So, yeah, we, we've got to have a couple of conversations with them, but I, I think overall, they're on the right track.
I'm sure the framing inside is in great shape.
You know, it's a dry climate.
Yeah, dry climate. The 505 Oak is coming along.
We checked it with a two-foot level, it's good.
Yeah, these ones got better.
Things continue to, to move forward, you know, and, yeah, no, no shortage of activity around the.
Yeah, I mean, on the 505, I think one of those 20-unit buildings was to be deed restricted for rentals, I believe. And it was, if they kept it, it was the one farthest from Oak Street, I don't know if they flipped that or not, but then they had at least one of the townhomes was to be deed restricted as well, is that correct?
Yeah, the, I'm trying to remember the, the total numbers out of it. I want to say it was a total of seven units?
There's 20 units, I think, in each of the buildings, the condos slash apartments and then the, I can't remember the number.
Are you talking Salida Crossings or you're talking?
No, I'm talking about the, the 505 Oak.
So those have four, four packs and then one six?
I thought there was three, was there four?
There's, there's, I believe there are six, six lots of four units and one of six units.
Oh, okay, that's right, that's right.
Seven of four?
And the one of six was the deed restricted toward the back, yeah. And then the townhouses where there are two.
I think there were two, yeah, I think there were two townhomes.
Yeah, those are what's being built now, right?
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, and they have a, they have a schedule as far as the deed restrictions. They need a CO, one of them before the sixth, second one before the 12th.
So things are happening. I mean, you know, it takes so long, people don't think anything is happening, but things are happening. Slowly but surely.
Doesn't happen overnight, that's for sure.
Yeah. Well, I hope that you guys can do some education on the 5H.
Yeah, a lot of it comes down to the questions that council asks, you know, it's very, it's responsive work, you know, like we kind of let them run it and if they have the questions, we are happy to answer and let them know what we, what we know. It's, it's hard to, sometimes it's hard to get that information out there when the question's not being asked publicly.
Right. Could you make a list of potential questions that might be asked?
We can make a list.
You know, I mean, it doesn't mean that they'll ask them, but I mean, you know, a lot of times, you know, it's, it's a, here are things that we've, we've wanted to know, right? Or.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, that too.
Greg, I had one comment before. I have a suggestion for a topic. I don't know if this is for, for commission someday, like someday in the future. I know we have a lot going on the next few months, but has there ever been discussion about like pre-approved ADU plans in town? Has that ever been a topic?
Yeah, in fact, it's.
This is part of the, the ADU stuff, actually, that Kristin is working on to get into our code.
Yeah.
To make us eligible for the ADU fund, the, the program, what's the name of it?
Prop 123? The ADU grant program.
ADU grant program.
Yeah. Okay, cool.
That would help us to do something along those lines.
Yeah.
It would be great.
Yeah, I've always thought that would be really, there's so many people that would probably benefit from that. Yeah. You know, not having to recreate the wheel and there's only so many.
Right.
Find a few that work and, you know.
And that speeds up the approval process.
I saw a great one.
Well, it's huge, if you don't have to hire a designer and then like an engineer, if it's just like these, you can do these tomorrow.
And you don't have to get.
The ADUG program does specify like architectural drawings, but they don't call them pre-approved plans because they still have to go through the site plan process no matter what.
But you would, you would kind of be able to.
It would more so be the county doing their, like building department review, things like electrical, structural, that kind of stuff. Hopefully their review would be more expedited. But for site plan, for land use, the, it's, it's always lot-specific, so we can't pre-approve.
But would that be administrative review?
Yes, it is now too, yeah. Actually, I think it's not even administrative.
For the new code, it would be permitted outright. You know, so they would just come in with a, the building permit, provide a site plan and we would, we'd need to, you know, look at the setbacks and obviously the height and all that, but.
Same as a single-family house.
But in terms of like, you could have a floor plan that's like, you know, meets the dimensioning requirements, the height requirements.
Yes.
Accessibility, things like that.
Yes.
So, yeah.
We talked about that quite, quite a long time ago even, of course, the land use code has been quite a long time ago, but yeah, we had, we had talked about it. So it's good to know it's coming.
I got to see one that had just been built in Seattle, my friend's house, and they went through a program just like that, pre-approved. They had like something like eight or 10 different options that you could choose from. And it was a gorgeous little, you know, backyard cottage style and perfect for the mother-in-law, truly was a mother-in-law apartment, you know, so. you know, so, yeah. It works well. It works well when you have the right lot for it and, and administratively, it's set up for it. So, yeah. We're excited about exploring that, that grant option in that program.
All right.
Right on.
Motion to adjourn?
Aye, so move. Do you have a second?
Motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you all.
I'd like to say, I think this side of the table is doing a lot...
Recording stopped.
Yeah, yeah.
Catch you next time.
Credit where credit's due, right? Yeah. Okay. Take care, Kenny.
See you, Kenny.
See ya.